Yes. Dana, ready. Look, I'm calling the planning commission meeting to order. We call the roles, please.
Mr. Yule.
Present.
Mr. Collins.
Here.
Mrs. Flansburg.
Here.
Mr. Del Sandro.
Here.
Mr. Calder.
Here.
Mr. Signor.
Here.
Chairman Denny.
Here.
Mr. Comenzo.
Here.
Mr. Tingley.
Here.
Okay, at this point in time, I need a motion to approve the summary of the minutes from our last meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Collins, seconded by.
Lynn.
By Lynn, I'm sorry, by Ms. Flansburg. On the vote, please.
Mr. Yule.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mrs. Flansburg.
Yes.
Mr. Del Sandro.
Yes.
Mr. Calder.
Yes.
Mr. Signor.
Yes.
Chairman Denny.
Yes, carry. First thing on the agenda we have tonight is Rotterdam Adventures Incorporated, fifty-five Duane'sburg Roads, nine-ten Rotterdam Industrial Park. The applicant requests we, a waiver, a site plan review for Snyder's Lance to occupy sixty-two thousand five hundred square feet of building nine for warehouse distribution of snacks. Former American Medical Depot in the Rotterdam Industrial Park. Dave, oh, I guess you're here, Dave, right?
Yep, I'm here. Hey, everybody.
Okay.
I appreciate you, appreciate you having us on. I'm also joined by Kristen and Rebecca from Snyder's Lance. It's Snyder's a handover. Everybody's probably had their snacks and pretzels, best pretzels, best pretzels in town. I'm not just saying that because they're our new tenant. Um, so hopefully this is pretty straightforward. They, unfortunately, American Medical Depot had issues. Uh, ended up filing for bankruptcy, surprisingly, in the middle of a pandemic. They, uh, they weren't able to figure it out. And I'm not being flip about it. They, um, there was, most of what they did was for elective surgeries. Uh, so anyway, then with the elective surgeries on hold, they ended up succumbing to, you know, COVID pressures. So, right, luckily, backfilling at Snyder's Lance, it's very similar operation. It's gonna be, uh, you know, a last mile delivery, I guess you would say, for snacks going to local, uh, you know, distributors, stores, grocers. And Kristen and Rebecca can weigh in and explain a little bit more about the operation. Um, it's about probably, I think, I think we're talking about twenty warehouse workers. Then on top of that, they have some independent operators that do the deliveries. So vans show up in the morning, get, get loaded up, run their routes and, uh, and return in the evening. Uh, but great company. It's a Campbell's, you know, related to Campbell's, Campbell's Soup Company, so tremendous tenant. Actually, it's, uh, it's between, between them and some of the other tenants we have in that new building. It's, uh, we're pretty, we're pretty proud of, uh, who we have in that building there. So, um, that being said, I can, uh, we can answer any questions or I could defer to Kristen and Rebecca to elaborate on the operation. How do you guys want to proceed?
What I'll do is I'll, I'll, uh, pull the planning board and see if they have any questions and we'll go from there, okay?
Yeah.
Mr. Yule, Mr. Yule.
Um, no questions on this project. It's nice to see, uh, you've got this, uh, rental space filled, uh, right away. And this new building, when we, you first started it, you only built a little bit and then you doubled it and then you made it bigger. And, uh, looks like you're about ready to have another one. So, uh.
You said it.
I, uh, I don't have anything and congratulations on keeping the rental spaces full.
Thank you, appreciate it.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Signor, any questions?
No, no, Jack. I like the whole idea of it. No problem.
Okay.
Looks pretty cut and dry and I'm okay with it, fine.
Uh, Mr. Collins.
No, I'm good with it, Mr. Chairman.
I don't think we're gonna have a problem at all, but, Mr. Dos Sandro.
No, Mr. Chairman, it's pretty straightforward. I have no more questions.
Ms. Flansburg.
No, I think it's a great project and a great location. I don't have any questions for the applicant.
And Mr. Calder, any questions?
Glad to see the jobs coming and, uh, no, I have no questions. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. That was pretty cut and dry, I guess. Uh, at this time, I need a motion for the waiver.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion. Do we approve the waiver?
Motion made by Mr. Yule.
I'll second, Jack.
Seconded by Mr. Signor. On the vote, please.
Mr. Yule.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mrs. Flansburg.
Yes.
Mr. Del Sandro.
Yes.
Mr. Calder.
Yes.
Mr. Signor.
Yes.
Chairman Denny.
Yes, very good. Very good. Next thing on the agenda we have.
Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it, as always.
Yes.
Appreciate it. Uh, Snyder's Lance and Campbell's Soup Company are very excited to be in the town of Rotterdam.
We're glad to have you.
Yes, we are. More jobs. Okay, uh, second thing on the agenda tonight. Rotterdam Solar One LLC, contract bendee in cities of Schenectady owner, landlocked parcel Gordon Road, tax parcel thirty-seven double zero. Concepts, content, excuse me, concept sketch site plan to develop a ground mounted solar array on the existing vacant wooded fifty-three point ninety-one acre parcel, but access roadway on the joint properties. Tax parcel thirty-seven double zero again, and on the land of N. N. S. James and Denise Bradshaw Engineering, MJ, MJ Engineering. Scott Price, is there a Scott Price here somewhere?
Uh, Chair, this is Joe Bianchi from MJ. I will be presenting tonight.
Okay, I've got to get that on my, my notes here. Okay, and someone from the solar place.
Yes, uh, I believe, I believe Sean McClellan is on the line.
Okay. Okay, guys, what are you doing out there? Give us a little insight as to what you're accomplishing. You're cutting all those trees down, are you?
Uh, well, not all of them. Um, would it, would it, Chairman, would it be possible if I could share my screen, I have a very quick.
Yes.
Summary to go over.
For sure, go ahead.
Okay, let's see if I can do this. Move on here. Can you see that?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay, good, so everything's working. Um, so thank you this, this evening, uh, Joel Bianchi, uh, from MJ Engineering, representing the applicant Rotterdam Solar One LLC. Um, who's just the LLC for active solar development. We're here to present the initial concept for a ground mounted solar array on Gordon Road. Uh, as I said earlier, Sean McClellan from Active Solar is on the line. To give you some quick background information, uh, again, the owner is the city of Schenectady, the applicant is Rotterdam Solar LLC. The project area in total is just about seventy-six acres. Um, it's actually composed of two tax parcels. Thirty-seven dash five dash one, which is roughly twenty, twenty-two acres, just, just shy of twenty-two acres. Then thirty-seven dash five dash two, which is just under fifty-four acres. That is the parcel where the development is occurring. Existing zoning is an A, A-one agriculture. The ground mounted solars are permitted as a special use permit in this district. Um, it's in fire district number seven, which we will, um, communicate or engage them, uh, at a later date. And then the surrounding uses, um, utility, which is the national grid power lines and the substation. Residential all along Gordon Road and then vacant properties. Everything along Gordon Road is under private ownership and then the yellow property to the north is actually owned by the town of Rotterdam. So this map was provided within the plan set we provided, so it shows you the boundaries of the, of the two properties. And then we did have the site evaluated for regulated wetlands. Um, there are no state wetlands, no state wetlands, but there are waters of the U.S. And this delineation is based on actually the field walk that occurred during the last planning board meeting, which is why we withdrew our application. Um, we had a walk, a walk that day from the core. Um, they changed the delineation boundary, which is reflected in this map and what you have. They also gave us some feedback that was positive, at least in our world, and I will speak to that earlier. So it, it bared that we withdraw our application, revise it, and then we submit back to the board. So the development plan, again, this is in the plan set, is fixed tilt panels, meaning these are fixed, these do not rotate. And those are the red, the red, uh, the lines that sort of go back and forth. We will have a security fence around the entire perimeter of the solar, solar field, meeting the special use criteria, I believe in Rotterdam, it's eight point five feet. We'll have site access. Um, the yellow line is the secure, the access that we've agreed in principle with Bradshaw to go from Gordon Road back to the property. And then the red is the internal road, um, to access the solar panels. We haven't shown it yet, but active is in active discussions with National Grid to potentially gain access through National Grid in the back. Um, through the power lines, they are actually going through major upgrades of the power lines. If you've been out there recently or driven up past the throughway, they're doing work there. So they are seeking permission to potentially gain access through National Grid. Um, they're, they're still in the early stages, but hopefully we can gain access also through National Grid. Um, what we do show on the lower left hand, lower right hand side is all the internal roads we're gonna, we're proposing to use, what's called the New York State BEC Pervious Hall Road. Um, those are used, being used more frequently on solar arrays. Um, they are very favorable for the environment. They don't generate runoff as if it was a normal road, like a paved road or a road made of crush or run. Um, so we've had great success. Region four BEC has accepted these, um, as far as a stormwater practice, or as far as in the stormwater world, where we don't have to treat it as an impervious surface. So that is what we're, we're gonna propose to use on this project. Uh, transformers, there's actually four of them, showing you those two, two dots in the center. Uh, inverters, which are, um, mechanical equipment that are mounted to the rear of the racking systems for the panels. And then we have the interconnect on the lower right hand side. That's usually what you see, the gang of poles, which is customer meter, utility meter, um, disconnects and so on. For this project, it's actually off on the east side, really outside of the site of the view shed along the national property. And then what we're gonna do is do some landscaping berms. Um, we did, you know, we did have the privilege to see the comments from, uh, Mr. LaJoy. So we did thought it was, I think it was prudent to actually show where we would put those. You know, we're envisioning they are probably anywhere from five to ten foot high and then we would plant probably a pine tree. Um, along those, you know, at anywhere from ten to twenty foot intervals, but we will obviously work out those details. So to provide some screening to those two properties closest to us. So to talk about the wetlands, you know, again, as I told you, we withdrew our application two weeks ago because the, the verbal input we got from the wet, from Army Corps personnel was that we in fact could clear the trees in the wetlands. Um, we can install the panels in the wetlands. Again, the tree removal is permitted. When we remove the trees, we can de-stump and then basically put the side cast of the, of the chips right in the wetlands without any issue. We'd have to use low impact equipment, basically instead of track mounted vehicles, use rubber tires. Access using, uh, the, the log pads, which you may have seen, where they're basically railroad ties tied together. Put over the wetland so we would, you know, run back and forth. Um, the only, the only prohibition that we really have is we can't put any fill material in the wetlands. Which through our site plan, right at this point, we, we have no need to do any filling in the wetlands. And then based on what the corps told us in the field two weeks ago is there would be no permitting required for this activity. Obviously, we need written confirmation from the corps from that, and as soon as we have that, we will provide, provide that to the town. Um, just to show that what we're proposing doesn't trigger any nationwide permits or individual permits. So I know with, with, um, solar, solar farms, noise is, oh, can, can be a factor or a concern. Um, the two noise generators are transformers and inverters, and they generate around sixty-two to sixty-five dBAs from three feet away. It quickly dissipates as you get further away from those. Um, to give you a comparison of other noise generators, you know, a restaurant, uh, conversation in a restaurant is a comparable noise generator. Um, some very high noise generator are freight trains, garbage disposal in a house or a plane flying over, pretty high eighty dBA. And then a quiet rural area, which would be this area, I would think, you know, just from background noise, um, nighttime noise, thirty dBA. In this instance, the noise generators, the closest building is, uh, four hundred feet away to lands of Bradshaw, which is south of us. That's a garage on his property. Uh, the home for Mr. Bradshaw is six hundred fifty feet away. And then the adjacent property to the west of Bradshaw is twelve hundred feet away. So based on the noise generators we would have, there would be no indication or you would not hear the noise from those noise generators on the site. So we have made application for two variances for this application. Um, the parcel is landlocked, so we have applied for a front property line width variance. Minimum one hundred fifty feet is required. We obviously do not have that. But again, we have secured access, um, through Bradshaw for, for this, this property. And then the second one is actually a, um, a requirement under the special use for the solar farms where it requires no more than thirty percent max clearing of the woodlands. We're proposing, um, sixty-four percent. When you consider the property that we are doing work on, but if you were to consider the aggregate of the properties, it's around forty-four percent. Um, the interesting thing that we found out is, you know, the deed for this property dates back to nineteen thirty-four. And through the title search, we, we couldn't confirm this, but we believe this was all one property, probably from the early nineteen hundreds. And then when National Grid came through and did, you know, and purchased property for the power lines, the property got separated and they get, got assigned two tax parcels. But it's, it's two tax parcels and we know we have to apply the variance based on the single tax parcel thirty-seven five down strip. So with that, that's just really a quick overview. Again, we're here just to have a concept discussion with the board, get any feedback. We have to go to the ZVA and if we're successful with that variance, we would obviously return to this board for site plan and special use permit considerations. So with that, if the board has any questions or comments, uh, we're here to answer those.
Okay, could you take your drawings back, take them down?
Sure. There you go.
Okay, what I'm gonna do is open this up to the board to see if we've been, have any questions or comments. Uh, Mr. Signor.
No, Jack.
Nothing.
No.
Okay. Ms. Flansburg. Sorry, order your, I'm sorry.
I have a bunch. Do you want to bear with me for a sec?
Well, I, I'm sure we have a few questions, so yes, go ahead.
All right, well, maybe I'll save some for the rest of you. I'll just ask you. Um, I'll just kind of sort of start by saying, I'm certainly in no way opposed to the capturing of solar energy. I think it's a, you know, the wave of the future. They're, they're coming about everywhere. Our town has created the code, um, a few years back, so that we were prepared for such development. And I think part of that code, um, one of the important things was not clear cutting entire areas of trees to, um, forego one natural resource to capture another. So I, I kind of have an issue with that, but it's not our board to determine, um, the, the area variance for the thirty percent, um, being over thirty percent. Um, but it does kind of seem counterintuitive to demolish a bunch of acres of trees to capture another natural resource. So I guess I have a couple of questions. I know that the, um, landowner that lives nearby that has a bunch of questions, I would like to have him have an opportunity to speak, so I don't want to take a bunch of his questions. But, um, I, I did, he, in, in the letter, it mentioned that the access road was, uh, on Bradshaw, but really along the property line of LaJoy. I don't want, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your last name. And if that is an issue, is there any possibility of moving it over to the opposite side of the Bradshaw property? So that it is even further away from this residence, since it's the Bradshaws that own, um, multiple properties along that line? Um, what else do I have? Um. And I do have some questions about the, I read that there was the thirty-five year, uh, lifespan for them and the decommissioning plan. Once, uh, if this were to go through and they clear cut and put their solar panels up, thirty-five years later, it just becomes grass? So those are my questions. I'll save the rest for anyone else who would like to know.
You did very well. Well, you did very well, Ms. Flansburg.
I have more, but I, I see some of my words probably would want to get in on it.
Well, I, I decided to, tonight to give you a break, because I always need you to last. We never get a chance to make your point, so.
Oh, hang on though. I do have one. There's a discrepancy in multiple locations on the size of the, on the height of the fence. Either eight or eight and a half feet in the special use permit, it's one, and MJ's thing, it's something else. So, uh, it's a small detail, but just, whichever one it is, go with it.
Okay, all right, uh, Mr. Collins, so how about you?
Yeah, I got a, a problem with the project. I just can't see cutting that much woods out. And then like Lynn said, you're swapping one for the other. Um, it's like here in Rotterdam, we had turkeys running all over Curry Road because we keep on taking away the natural habitat of, of the wild. And they have no place to go. And, uh, I don't see where this is really a plus for Rotterdam. I mean, we got enough solar panels and I understand everybody's out to make a profit, but I just can't see destroying that much woodlands. I mean, you get oxygen from trees, soil erosion, and I know it's gonna be, go through a lot of, um, engineering. But I just can't see any benefit of clear cutting that much natural resources to, to gain, what, what do you gain? That, that, that's my biggest question. I have a, and I'm not a big tree hugger, but I just have a hard time destroying that much woods. Just, just to put solar panels. We have solar panels all over Rotterdam. I mean, I know the city wants to make some money on the land, but that really isn't, it pertains to us, it's not our problem. Um, like you say, it has to go through the zoning, but I have a big problem with clear cutting that much woods from, from natural, from nature. I, I just have a problem with it. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Collins, uh, Mr. Calder.
Hey, uh, I'm just curious, do we have anybody, any of the landowners that have joined this property? Are they online here tonight or in?
Yes, yes, there is. Mr. LaJoy is online.
Yes, okay.
Well, he's listening to our comments. I, I'm definitely gonna give him a chance to speak when we go, okay?
I, yeah, I will do that as we go, but I, uh, I was going over the nine items that he had listed and, uh, they really did their homework and they did it well. Um, I, uh, I would hope those questions have been answered, uh, in, in a proper way so that, uh, they could be done. I don't see anything here from the Bradshaw family, but, uh, so I have no idea right now what their, uh, how they feel about even having another road on the other side of their property. Uh, I, I don't know about that. Um, so I'm not so sure that's a good thing either. But, uh, as far as, uh, what Lynn said, I agree with, and, uh, Clark with the woods. Uh, I'd like to do a little hunting myself and, uh, I, uh, I don't expect the city's gonna let us hunt on that property, but, uh.
Maybe they should just donate to Rotterdam and make it naturally wild.
Well, yeah, we also need a park, so, but anyway, um, no, I, I, I don't like where it is, to be honest with you. I know that's conceptual. I know we got a lot of work left to do, but, uh, that's how I feel. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Calder, uh, let's see. Uh, Mr. Dos Sandro, where are you? Yeah, you're here.
I'm right here, Mr. Chairman. Um, you know, if, if this was flatland, I would have no problem giving a hundred percent backing on this. I mean, most of the board knows that I have solar panels on my house and they're very productive. But the thought of clear cutting that much acreage really bothers me. Um, I know the projects that the county had, you know, across from Larners, Rice Road, over in Glenville, Southern Water, those were all, you know, freestanding solar panels put on flatland, you know, very little disturbance of trees. And, you know, I, I gotta agree with, you know, Ms. Flansburg and Mr. Collins and the rest of the board. Uh, I have a hard time, you know, trying to pass this with the clear cutting that much acreage. Uh, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Dos Sandro, last but last, not least, Mr. Yule.
Well, I, I've got to say, I agree with everybody on the board. I, you know, when you think about the, that area out there, the, uh, the lay of the land, that's very hilly area. So if you start cutting the trees off those hillsides and removing them, you know, you're gonna end up with probably some soil erosion over the time. Especially if you get a heavy rain out there. And like Clark said, you know, all those trees produce a lot of oxygen. And what about the, the animals that are living in the trees and around the trees, the deer, the turkeys, whatever's out there? I, uh, I have a real problem with that. It's out in the middle of nowhere. And I've been trying to figure out how Schenectady wound up owning seventy-seven acres of landlocked property in Rotterdam. It just, that, that doesn't make any sense to me at all, but the, uh, I'm totally against this project. And, uh, hopefully when the zoning board reads the minutes, they will, uh, they will agree with us as far as any kind of variances on it. Because that's, that's way over the percentage that we allow. That's why that code was written, where you'd only cut, uh, thirty percent. And, uh, you know, that's just a way over the top. And they're trying to include the other twenty-seven acres on the other side that's not even part of this project. But my thought is this gets approved next year or six months from now, you're gonna see him coming back with the other side, that other twenty-seven acres saying, you know, the other one worked out so well, we want to put, uh, you know, more panels on the other side. So I think that, I saw a number, I thought it was like twenty-one thousand panels are gonna be on that site. That's a tremendous amount. I just, uh, you know, if it's on a flat piece of property and maybe it doesn't have to be in the town of Rotterdam. Uh, but I, I don't see it happening here and, uh, I don't see the benefit to Rotterdam. I don't see a tax benefit. I don't see anything for us, other than we're gonna have that. It's kind of like the Waito Road project when we built the Dunkin' Donuts in Rotterdam and the septic system wasn't gillone, you know, so I, uh, I have a, I have a real issue with this project. So, and I'm glad you could put me last. All right, thanks very much, Mr. Chairman.
I gave you a chance, Tom. I gave you, gave you a little breathing, breathing room. Well, uh, at this time, uh, I'm gonna ask Mr. LaJoy to give us some of, some of the insiders.
Well, Jack, I think Joe wanted to say something.
Yeah, Jack, you know, I, with this project, I mean, I would like to see some concessions made that would, uh, help the LaJoy family. I, I know they got it close to the side of their property, uh, you know, if, if something can be done to kind of, uh, make it a little better for them. I, you know, I'd be in favor of that. When you had asked me earlier, um, I, I meant, I meant to say that, but I want to say it now that I'd like to see us, um, somehow make this thing as palatable as possible for the LaJoy family if it continues through.
That's it, Joe, are you?
Yeah.
I, I believe if, if it does, if it, if it does go through, uh, all the, all the concessions that Mr. LaJoy would want, I'm sure that they would take care of that for him, I'm sure. But right now, we're at a point where we don't know. Uh, speaking about the land and all this, why the city wouldn't own it, if you think about it years ago, and I'm speaking from fast experience with my family. My grandfather used to own property up there and it was a woodlot. They used to cut trees like crazy and sell firewood. Maybe somehow city of Schenectady owned that land for that reason back in the early nineteen hundreds, because my grandfather did that back then. So that's a little, little insight as to what was going on in Rotterdam way back when. Mr. LaJoy, tell us what you think of this project.
Well, first of all, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak here tonight. I really appreciate you guys listening to me. I wasn't sure how it was gonna go, whether or not I'd even have a chance to, uh, kind of say my piece. So again, I, I very much appreciate it. And I, and I kind of wanted to just address some of the comments that the board members have mentioned here. Um, you know, as far as the woods and what, what is in them, there's a lot of deer, a lot of turkey, a lot of wildlife. My, uh, you know, for those of you that haven't read my email, um, that I, that I sent to the board. Um, you know, we, we recently moved here four years ago. My wife and I kind of settled into this area because we love the wildlife, we love the nature aspect of it. We wanted to get out in the country. We lived in Latham where, um, you know, you're kind of on top of each other and there is no trees, there is no wildlife. Um, and that's really what drew us to the Rotterdam area. Um, we wanted more acreage. I wish we could have had more acreage so that maybe a concern like this wouldn't have come up. But, um, obviously we bought what we could and, and we can't control the lands around us. We're certainly aware of that. Um, but we definitely didn't expect, um, a house having been there for twenty-five years. Uh, you know, very few years after purchasing it, the land behind it being cleared and an access road being put right along the property boundary. So, um, that certainly is, is concerning to us. Um, and I've walked that property with my sons and, and my wife many of times. And I don't know how they're coming up with the percentages of what acreage would be cleared because I don't know of a clear spot on that, on that land at all. Um, unless they're just subtracting certain boundaries, there's a tree on every single piece of that acreage. And from what I can tell, they're using as much as they possibly can for those panels. So, um, that is, that is a lot of trees that would be removed. And, uh, I think it was, um, Ms. Flansburg that mentioned, you know, that we're kind of trading one green type of energy in trees for another in solar panels and what is the benefit of that? And, and many of you. solar panels and what is the benefit of that? And many of you touched on what is the benefit on, of this for the town of Rotterdam? Well, I can tell you, there's seems to be benefit for the city of Schenectady who would be getting five hundred thousand dollars from the solar company. They also seem to be they're getting green energy, they believe for the city of Schenectady residents. As they advertise in the article that mentioned this sale. And, you know, they are also furthering their green initiative for the city of Schenectady, but as far as benefits for the town of Rotterdam beyond clearing a bunch of trees and obviously, you know, furthering the cause of a, of a business, I, I don't know that there are many benefits to the town of Rotterdam. So that's just to address your concerns and I don't want to take up too much of everyone's time tonight. Again, I appreciate it. But, you know, I do have the questions that I included in the email that I sent ahead of time. Should I go through those or?
We all got it.
How would you like me? So obviously the, the acreage and the percentage of it, I was concerned about per the code of Rotterdam, which I, I assume was voted on and, and, and created for a reason. There seems to be, I think they mentioned clearing sixty some odd percent of the acreage, which is more than double than the thirty percent. So I question that and, and why Rotterdam would want to allow such a thing. Also, National Grid, very close by. You know, because most concerning to me, I don't like clearing all those trees for the solar panels, but this access road would be extremely close to my house. And the National Grid has a power line, which they mentioned in their presentation, the engineering company did, that they are currently using all the time to access back there. And I, I'm curious as to why they didn't pursue accessing this piece of property, not just the one on the other side of the power lines, but the one adjacent to my property. Why didn't, it wasn't considered to access it through National Grid rather than create a road right through the property in between me and Mr. Bradshaw, which will have a significant impact on the value of my property, on the privacy of my property. And quite frankly, I'm concerned about the, the noise of, of driving these heavy machinery and things to clear everything back there, possibly driving wood back out and all the machines going up and down with my dog and two small children and everything. The noise associated with that as well as the safety. You know, I, I would love it if they needed to do this, if the board approved for them to put the solar farm back here, that they were to access it another way. If they were going to use this property between me and Mr. Bradshaw, I would really hope that they would consider not putting it as close to my side of the property boundary. I, unlike Mr. Bradshaw, who, who I'm friends with and I appreciate him, you know, looking out for him and his family, but unlike him, I stand to gain nothing from this. Whereas I'm sure he's getting a significant sum of money for granting them access. So if, you know, he, he benefiting from it might move this road further away from my property line. And also, you know, the town code provides for privacy berms and screening and all sorts of things for the solar farm itself. And I would hope that it would extend to this access road so that at the very least, if I have to live with a road right next to my house, is at least screened and there's as much privacy between me and the road as possible. You know, I am also curious how long it would take to complete the road, how long it would complete to take, you know, to do the solar project. I think they said the duration of the project is thirty years. What happens after that? They say it turns into grass or something, but what if, are they going to sell the property to somebody else who then wants to develop it for another reason? Is this road next to my house going to turn into a road for a housing development? You know, many concerns, especially with that road that is going to impact my house for the long term. And other than that, you know, we do have a pond back there and, and wetlands surrounding that. I don't know if the DEC or the Army Corps of Engineers are concerned at all about putting a road through that type of thing. Water well right along the right along the property boundary and our water well is a lot of clay in it, which I know can be fragile. I don't know if having machinery driving so close to the well could possibly cause pieces of that clay to fall in and cause us water issues. So without rambling on, again, I appreciate your time, but those are some of my concerns. I do appreciate it. Sounded like since the initial call for having this on the agenda and now it seems they have agreed to at least put privacy screening between the back part of my property and the solar farm itself. I, I appreciate that. It's in the, it's in the town code that they're required to do so, but at least that seems like they're willing to do some things to mitigate the impact on my property. I'd love the rest of my questions to be answered and some additional things to be done.
Have you got a lot more questions?
I could keep going.
I know you're, you're continuing. I mean, we got other, other things on the agenda tonight, but you have made your point. I'm sure the, the board is, is understanding what, what your problems might be. So at this point in time, I'm going to give the engineer from Active Solar. If he has something to say about the project.
Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, what's your opinion on this project? Everybody else is giving their opinion. What's yours?
What's my opinion on the project?
Yeah.
Well, I can see, I can see Mr. LaJoy's concern about all the trees being cut. But is there, is there something saying that someone can't buy that property from the city and go back there and actually, like I said earlier, cut the trees and sell, sell, sell the logs? So we're not, and that's not going to be a solar farm, but they can cut as many trees back there as they want to. There's nothing in Rotterdam saying they can't cut trees, I'm sure. Maybe a certain percentage, but nothing stopped them from doing it and they're going to be using the road. I'm not against the project, but I'm just giving you some points that Mr. Joy is concerned about. I understand, but again, it could happen. What he's looking at about his well and the animals, it could happen, even though it's not a solar farm. That's the point I'm trying to make.
All right, thank you.
Okay, you've got it. Go back to these guys from the power company. You got something you would enjoy to give us a little insight into your plans for this property?
Yes, so, so Chairman, I, I heard the comments and I could group them. I, I heard everyone was, is concerned about the clearing, which that is not unexpected. Obviously, we have that matter before the zoning board and we will make our case in front of them. But you do raise a good point and I, I, I will say that if things were, you know, if we had access, there would be nothing that would prohibit an applicant coming in and proposing a subdivision that may have more clearing and still conform to zoning because they're not subject to the special use criteria of a solar farm, but that is what it is. But I will go down and answer everything except for the tree plan. So Ms. Flansburg had questions on the access and whether it could be moved. We did explore moving it. But we were looking at site distance to that curve on Gordon Road. We wanted to try to get it as far away as possible, but still honoring the fact that hey, we, we, we know that we're putting it close to the adjacent residence. So I believe the, the applicant, the applicant active solar is open for some concessions on what, what we can do to possibly shift it slightly or potentially do some visual screening. The question becomes, you know, the road is twelve foot wide. Clearing width is probably in the order of magnitude of twenty-five to thirty feet. So as a comparison, if this lot was, if Bradshaw was to build a single family home there, the clearing width would be similar to the driveway that would serve that property. So that gives you a sort of context of how big this road is. Another important fact is as far as vehicles going in, in the operational state, we anticipate about one vehicle a month merely to come and check on it. During construction, obviously there will be more vehicles going in and out as part of the construction. Ms. Flansburg also had a question about what happens after decommission. The decommissioning plan basically says we would, we would remove all the equipment and then restore it, meaning seed it with some natural vegetation. It would even potentially include putting back pine, pine trees at certain, certain quantities. But we would obviously work with the town as what would be a suitable decommissioning and restoration plan. Definitely open to that. Mr. Collins indicated a post-tree clearing. We understand that. Mr. Calder had the same thing. Did have questions that making sure Mr. LaJoy's questions were answered. I tried to answer them the best via the presentation, but I will answer them again today. He did ask, Mr. Calder asked about Mr. Bradshaw if he had concerns. Active has been in negotiations with him for access. So he's, he's indicated no opposition to the project. So, but if, if we need to get some formal correspondence out of him, we can certainly strive for that. Mr. Delisandro opposed clear cutting. Mr. Yule opposed the clear cutting and the habitat destruction. He did have a question about how did the city acquire the land? Actually, we, we know that the, the city bought the property with the intentions of using it for some sort of water storage, whether it was a reservoir or a tank. You know, obviously they don't need that. They have water storage and BBSL and MSCUNA. But that was the original purpose of why the city had bought that property.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Signor had requested concessions to Mr. LaJoy, something done to help. Again, I think we've augmented the application at least on one point. You know, Mr. LaJoy did raise the point of, hey, can you put a berm to the rear of our property? We acknowledge we would do that, but we thought it would be very valuable to get input from the board and the residents before we started popping things randomly. So it's good that we have input. So we could focus that berm towards the rear of his property. And I'll talk about what else we possibly can do. Mr. Denny raised the concern about tree clearing. To Mr. LaJoy's questions. So he did ask, why didn't we pursue National Grid on access? Right off the top of our presentation, I said that Active has actively been engaging National Grid for access to their property. They are a private landowner, just like Mr. Bradshaw, so we have to go through a certain process to see if we can gain access to their property. And again, I told the board that we would keep you up to date on our success in that access. Mr. LaJoy had questions again about the access and the noise. During the construction phase, there will be equipment coming in and out associated with construction. During the operational phase, again, one vehicle a month, you know, we're talking a pickup truck to go back there, look at the, the, the state of the equipment and leave. Very simple. Mr. LaJoy asked about screening of the road. Now, the, the screening of the road, there's, there's one of two ways that we can do this. We could put a berm along the road in the Bradshaw property. But in, in our opinion, that's counterintuitive. In order to put the berm in, we would have to clear more trees to make space for the berm. We could certainly look at what we could possibly do on his property. Maybe some plantings at a critical point and, and sort of try to mitigate that view shed impact. But we would be really hesitant to, to clear more trees on land of Bradshaw to plant more trees. But again, we can continue to, to look at how we could potentially have a concession and mitigate that.
Okay, let's cut this to the
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get, I'm almost done. What happens to the site after the solar farm is decommissioned? Again, I've already covered that. Wetlands, Army Corps has walked the site. Both the access road and where the panels are, the delineation is what we have. DEC has no jurisdiction because there's no map, DEC wetlands in vicinity, so there will be no need to bring them in. And then machinery close to wells and impact. Don't believe that machinery going in and out of the site would have any impact, anything different than vehicles traveling on Gordon Road. So we don't believe that's an issue for this project. So Mr. Denny, thank you for the opportunity and I know you have a long night.
Yes, thank you. Okay, at this time, I need a motion to declare lead agency, lead agency under seeker. Motion? For lead agency under seeker? Apparently we're not going to get that, am I right? Okay, I need a motion. Probably we're not going to need this one neither, but I'm not, I'm going to ask it. Motion to authorize a chairman to enter into an agreement with a town designated engineer to assist the, to assist the planning board in this review. I'll, I'll move, I'll move on that, Jack. Anyone else second that? No? Okay, well, that's, that's as much as we're going to discuss on this, on this project. I I guess our planner will get back to the engineer.
Yes, I would just Mr. Chairman, I guess just in terms of the, uh, both of the motions that were proposed this evening, um, we don't have the expertise, I guess, in-house here to review this application. So I think if the applicant is going to move forward, I think it would probably be in the best interest of the town to get a town designated engineer on board to help assist in the review. We haven't had many solar projects and, and the ordinance is fairly new, so there's, there's some nuances to solar projects that, that are unique to the planning commission review. So that's, that's my two cents in regards to.
Okay, well, then I'll ask again for the authorization to the chairman to enter into an agreement with a designated engineer. Mr. Signor made the motion and I needed a second. Anyone?
I'll second.
Second if I missed you.
Your chairman.
Second if I missed you. Okay, on the vote for the hiring of the engineer.
Mr. Yule?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Flansburg?
Yes.
Mr. Delisandro?
Yep.
Mr. Calder?
Yes.
Mr. Signor?
Yes.
Chairman Denny?
Yes. Thank you, by the way.
Chairman, before we close, I have one procedural question for Mr. Commensor and Mr. Tingley. If the board did not act on the seeker lead agency, does the ZBA do its own seeker or do they ride along with your seeker determination?
Well, if, if this is a, if this is a type one action, it has to be a coordinated seeker review. So there needs to be an agency that declares lead agency and if the planning board is not doing that at this time, the zoning board will either attempt to do that themselves or they won't be able to act until there is a, a secret lead agency and a determination of significance made. I think what's been made clear tonight, just reading between the lines a little bit is, and I don't want to speak for the whole board or any particular members, but I get the sense the board wouldn't necessarily mind seeing this project move forward with some modifications, but I, I also get the sense that modifications were not offered to address the concerns. And I think that in all likelihood, the board as a whole is probably waiting for the project applicant, the engineer to come back with a modified project before they want to pursue, you know, the fully reviewing it. That seems to be my sense.
Yeah, no, I, I don't, I don't disagree with that. I was just questioning or not questioning, just asking the question a lot procedurally, how the ZBA conducts its seeker review versus the planning board.
Well, if it's, again, if it's a type one action, it has to be coordinated. If not, if it's not a type one action, then it can be an uncoordinated review.
Yeah, and I, I believe missed, I believe the town initially had classified this as unlisted, but understood. No, point taken, understood. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I guess we'll move on to our next on the agenda. Titan Valley developer, Joseph Chetone, twenty-seven eighty Hamburg Street, preliminary and or final plant, site plan, special use permit, public hearing reviewed to allow for the redevelopment and expansion of the former Joe's Pizza in a restaurant banquet facility on the first floor with six existing apartments on the second floor. Additional, there is a separate existing three unit apartment building on the property at one point six acre parcel, engineering Herzog and Herzog.
Okay, it's actually Hersberg and Hersberg today.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, it's getting later ready.
Yeah, I know, it's just, okay.
If you could share the screen, I would, I'd bring up the map so we can
Yeah, you, you do that because there was a, so a lot of, a lot of things that we were questioning. So bring the map up and go through it for us. I've got one here.
Share the screen. Can you see that?
There's nothing.
Not yet.
See it on my screen, but that's the meaning. See it on my screen, but that doesn't mean anything. Okay. I admitted I'm not very good at this. I wouldn't even attempt it. I've done it before, but for some reason this one doesn't want to come up.
Hey, Dan, if you have, if, I do have a copy of the map if, uh, if you have trouble. It's the bottom middle of the screen. It should say share screen and then, and then you just need to click on the PDF. That's in the message. That if you, if you grab your mouse and go, it looks like you pulled, it looks like you pulled up the, the, um, the email. Just, yeah, just double click on that PDF where it says up in the upper, uh, left-hand corner.
Okay.
With your mouse, if you double click that, it should, the, the PDF should show.
I apologize.
Dan, you want me to, you want me to just pull mine up and then you can, uh, you can tell me where to point?
Yep.
All right. I had to do this in the last meeting too, so.
Yeah. Billy McFreese is on vacation, so he wasn't here. So.
There you go.
But everybody see that? Okay. All right. You just tell me where to point, Dan.
Well, the, uh, the project, since you saw it last, we made some changes based upon comments that we heard. Uh, number one, the rear parking lot that was shown as pay, as gravel before is now paved and that's the rear parking lot. We added some lighting back there. Uh, we also added landscaping on the residential side of the project. And we added landscaping around a dumpster. Um, we showed some lighting in front of the, um, building. We marked the septic system to be abandoned and, uh, removed. Uh, the other changes were made was we made this one, one drive, one driveway in on the right-hand side and a driveway coming out on a, on the left-hand side. Um, we also added some parking spaces. Now those are on a proposed easement or a proposed lease agreement with the adjoining there. And, um, Joe Sutone has talked to the people and we sent them a plan. They have not yet agreed to that. So from the standpoint of this final approval, our goal would be to, to have the approval conditioned upon us getting that easement, but allowing us to go forward with the project, even if we don't get the easement. The only difference is we, we give up those angled parking spots. They're now shown there. We added the angled parking spots where a comment was made at the last meeting that having the parking all the way at the back was, would be inconvenient. And although it's, it's not a, you know, it's, it's only about a two hundred and fifty foot walk to the furthest parking spots. It's, it, it would not be, um, as convenient as these angled parkings would be. So we added some angled parkings at the front and angled parkings along, um, the hotel next to us. And that's pretty much the project the way it is now. We, the landscaping pretty much remained, other than the landscaping we added at the back. And we think it'll look very nice and, uh, be very good for the appearance of Joe's restaurant.
Okay. I'm going to open it up to the planning board if you're all set.
I'm, I'm done with my direct presentation. I'll try to answer any questions which the board may have.
Okay, Peter, can you take that down so we can? Apparently he doesn't hear me. It's still up.
Why not leave it up in case we have questions about it, Jack?
Didn't anybody, nobody got one? I got one. I don't know how nobody else did, right?
I got one, but it's too small to read, you know?
I got a big, but anyway.
Well, put it back up then, Peter. They want to see it. I swear to God. Okay. Let's, let's see what you guys got, what comments you have. Uh, Mr. Yule.
Okay, I'm waiting for the map to come back up.
I don't know if he's going to do that.
All right. Well, first of all, I'll start before, while Peter's putting it back up. Um, first of all, I think, uh, he's done a tremendous job over there. He's, he's got, uh, he's got stuck with a building that was a hodgepodge over there. A lot of different things went on there. One building was built and, uh, I think people, uh, let him do some things that probably were not, uh, were not the, the right thing to do at the time, but nobody checked him on it. And I'm not talking about Mr. Sutone. I'm talking about previous owners. Um, so the one building that was in the middle, they finally took that down. So you've got some more area there to, to work with. Uh, but he's done a great job with it, paving the parking lot in the back and with the parking along the side and, uh, I noticed he had parking along the, uh, the, uh, interior, well, the road that goes in, the entrance, it looks like there's parking along there. I wasn't sure how many handicap parking spots there were. I mean, they, they said they had eighty-seven parking spots. Uh, and you should have one for every twenty-five. So they should have had four. But I, I'm not sure, but that could be easily rectified, I'm sure. Uh, the, uh, the doors were not, um, easily determined either, uh, where they are as far as that. But, uh, I, I like the plan. I drove by. It looks, it looks nice what he's got. Uh, you know, there was some work that took place without permits apparently, but that's here and there. Uh, we need to, you know, we need to go with this. This would give us at least a banquet hall in Rotterdam. Uh, and the building is existing. It's not like we're, we're cutting down, uh, you know, a, a neighborhood to put this in. People are, were used to it when it was Joe's and it was busy then. And with a banquet hall and having a restaurant, uh, or a hotel next door, a motel next door, that would help his business at some point too, if he ever got into doing small weddings and that type of thing. So um, I commend him on, on what he's done there and I'm looking forward to progressing and opening up. Okay, that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, could I comment? We do have four handicap spots. We have three on a side of the building and one back by the residence area. There actually are four handicap spots.
There's one in front also.
The two in front. And then one back by the apartment.
Yeah, I see him.
Yeah.
I see him. Okay, Mr. Signor, any, any comments?
Uh, Jack, I pass that. Uh, I pass that every day and, and I gotta see, I, I'm so happy to see what's been done there compared to when it used to be the, the pizza place. I mean, these people have, you know, they've got a big investment in there. They're trying to do a good job. It's a major improvement to the Hamburg Street area. And, um, you know, I wish them all the luck and just bear in mind to take all the safety concerns and, uh, you know, let's get open and into business.
Okay. Mr. Collins.
No, I like the project. I really like the front area with, with the gas pits and so forth. In fact, I remember this one was really a, a fish fry place years ago in the sixties. But my one question is how are you going to do snow removal? Where are you going to push it? That was my only concern.
Well, we didn't identify, but there's plenty of space to the rear.
Okay. I didn't know if, if you own past, if you could go past that, so.
No, but a, again, there is some other space on the, uh, on the side of the apartment, uh, building that could hold snow and it's not, it's not a very long, uh, run for the plow to take it back to there.
All right. No, I like the project, Mr. Chairman. It really looks nice. And like, uh, Mr. Yule said, uh, we need a banquet facility in Rotterdam and this should fit the bill, especially with the hotel next door, since we lost Malozi. So I like the project, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Delisandro.
Uh, just one thing, that's all I have is, but, and I'd like to commend Mr. Sutone for what a wonderful job he's done with this project. I mean, it really, really, it's kind of a long way. It looks great for that section of Rotterdam and, uh, I think he's doing a wonderful job. That's all I have.
Mr. Calder. My Calder.
Just another empty building filling up, which is good. Oh, I'm, I'm fine with the project. That's going to be an improvement over there. Thanks.
Okay, and Ms. Flanshaw.
Uh, like the others, I think it's a fantastic project as well. Uh, all the improvements that I've seen so far look, look great. I do have a couple of questions. Um, I'm not sure if this plan is different that's on the screen to what we have. But, um, where it talks about the site covering statistics, it still talks about a seventeen thousand square foot gravel area. There is no more gravel anymore, right? One that's just left over from the rear part originally being gravel.
Yeah, that, that became asked while we failed to change it on the coverage table. Yep. You're correct.
While you're there, just one other thing, because you had mentioned, well, number eight was one of the comments from DPD. And drywall shall be properly abandoned prior to completing site plan and paving work. But on the plan, it's, it shows on our plan that an existing septic tank and infiltration is to be used to collect runoff from pavement. Is, is it going to? Right. Is it going to be?
No, it's going to be abandoned as, as requested.
All right.
I don't know why, I don't know why that note stayed there.
Okay. Well, last but not least, and this is just whatever. Is that really where you would like your dumpster to go? It seems like the furthest point from the people who are going to be utilizing it. Obviously you don't want it near the home or near the business. I don't know. I was, you have it wherever you like. It's just, it literally is the furthest point away. You know, I'm not, that's most convenient, but you gotta have one.
We took it up with Joe and Joe was willing to put it back there because from a site planning standpoint is the ideal place to put it. Uh, as far, as far away from the active portion of the site as we could and distance from residents. So Joe agreed to have it back there. I, I think essentially, you know, they'll have to lug uh, the trash a little bit further to get there, but I think it's a worthwhile effort.
Not a problem. No, I think it looks great. Uh, your plan looks great. What they've done so far, it's nothing but an improvement from what it was. I look forward to seeing it when it's done.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, I'd also, uh, in agreement with the rest of the planning board, it's a big improvement and that, and I think it's, it's going to be a big plus for Hamburg Street for sure. Uh, at this time, uh, I have Mr. Tingley speak about the receiving of written comments for our public hearing.
Yes, um, can you all hear me? Okay?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, good. So, um, a public hearing notice was published, uh, and it gave instructions to potential commenters on how they could, um, either submit written comments or spoken comments. Again, this meeting and public hearing is being held in accordance with executive orders, allowing them to be held remotely, uh, which remain in effect. Um, for, uh, persons that wanted to submit written comments, um, they were to be submitted and received, um, to Mr. Comenzos either in the mail or by email, uh, by May third, uh, which was yesterday at four PM. Um, also people could speak, uh, by signing up by leaving their name and phone number, uh, with Mr. Comenzos um, indicating that they wanted to speak. Um, and they had to do that by today at, uh, twelve noon. Uh, Mr. Comenzos, did anybody sign up to speak?
No.
And did anybody submit any written comments on the project?
I did not receive any, no.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think, uh, as is your usual practice, um, now that we've gone through the written comments, which there aren't on anybody that signed up, which there are none, you can also ask if there's anybody on the line now that would like to speak.
Is there any, anyone on the line now would like to speak for sure? I'm opening this up for a public hearing. Anyone? No one does to speak? No one has any? At this point, I'm closing the public hearing. I need a motion to approve the special use permit with conditions.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Mr. Calder. Anybody else awake?
I'll, I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Delisandro. On the vote, please.
Mr. Yule.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mrs. Flanshaw.
Yes.
Mr. Delisandro.
Yes.
Mr. Calder.
Yes.
Mr. Signor.
Yes.
Chairman Denny.
Yes, motion carried. Here you go, Joe.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Um, before you ask for a motion on the site plan, can I just make one, uh, point to the board so that it can be included?
Yes.
Um, on the site plan, um, and Mr. Hersberg can clarify this. It appears that there is going to be some construction in the form of paving on the neighboring property. Um, and although one of the conditions is to provide an easement, um, uh, to the town for review, allowing for the ingress and egress and parking and that kind of thing there. Um, I do think it's important that the applicant also submit consent of that property owner um, to this, to that portion of the project that's on their property. It's a minimal amount, but, uh, I do believe there's some paving that would be going on there. Mr. Hersberg, is there, is there paving that, that is to occur on the neighboring property?
Yes, there is. And again, uh, that's shown on the plan. We actually proposed relocate the, the line of shrubs that demarcate, demarcate that property line. But this is now proposed. Joe has shared it, uh, with the people next door. Uh, they still have, are mulling it over, deciding what to do. Actually, Joe has offered to lease, um, that property from them. Uh, and they're considering the offer. Uh, we don't have their approval yet. What I would hope is that the final approval could reflect the fact is that if that approval is not granted, we revert back and remove the annual parking that requires that we move, we move that, um, shrub back. And if that, that was the case, we'd be either or so that wouldn't hold Joe up from moving forward with the, with the project.
My suggestion to the board would that it would just simply add a condition to if it's going to approve it tonight, the, the, the presentation has been that the parking is going to be added on that site. I would just suggest adding a condition that they obtain the consent of the neighboring property owner to that construction on their property. If they can't get it, then, then my suggestion is they would come back in for an amendment because what's been presented to you is a site plan that includes a portion of that site. And that's what you're, you're looking at this evening. So that's my suggestion.
We could add, add a
Condition. Yep. Add a condition to the list of conditions that includes obtaining the consent of the neighboring property owner to do the work on that property that's proposed.
Okay, could I get a motion today?
I'll, I'll, I'll move.
Motion by Mr. Signor.
So just to clarify what the motion is, the, I, I would suggest the motion be a motion to approve the site plan with conditions, including the additional condition that I mentioned. Is that your motion, Joe?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll second it.
I, I've got to read that motion to approve the site plan with conditions. So Joe made the motion.
Yeah.
Any second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Collins. On the vote, please.
Mr. Yule.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mrs. Flanshaw.
Yes.
Mr. Delisandro.
Yes.
Mr. Calder.
Yes.
Mr. Signor.
Yes.
Chairman Denny.
Yes, motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, next time I'm going to bring somebody along who knows how to use my screen.
Get one of your grandkids.
They're much better at that I am. If they were here, they would have got it up in a whiz. Take care. Good night.
Bye.
Bye.
Dana, our meeting has ended.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.